Let me call the meeting to order. Carol Dougherty, Chair, Gregory DeMello and Nathan Palowski, of the Special Project Subcommittee. Superintendent John Cabral has joined us. Marquise Taylor from Coaching for Change will join us later. So we have two, Dana Shortly, I hope. We have two issues on the table. One is to look at the Coaching for Change program, to talk a little bit about what the program was like in the winter. And then to, I believe, Marquise is going to present to us what it is that he has in mind for the coming year. And then we can ask him questions. And then make some decisions about what we want to do about that. And the second is the task meeting, bringing task back to the Taunton Public Schools. I provided you with a copy of the testimony that was given to us at our school committee meeting last week, and some recommendations for what it is that they would like to do for the next, for the next school year. So, Marquise is not here. Do you want to take up task first?
Sure, sure.
I think that everybody has the same document. This, this one with the chart on it and the recommendations. And this is, as I said, this is the same, this is the same proposal that she, the presentation that she made at the school committee meeting. But, so let's just quickly look down with, with this document. And what it is that they're asking for is $125,000 for a year to restore the program to its former glory, if you will, giving them the opportunity to hire two staff with that $125,000 and to continue on the program in the way in which it was structured previously. So I'm going to ask the superintendent to make some comments on the program as it was previously, so that we can consider going forward.
So, task was housed both the alternative high school and at Taunton High School. And they provided our students with a lot of career exploration and a lot of career support and helped them with placements in the community with business partners. That's pretty much my general understanding of the work that they performed. I'm sure I'm not doing it justice. I'm sure they've done, they've done more. But I will say there is a need for the Taunton Public Schools with our growing CBTE department and the pathways that we're going to be introducing or developing in the next two to three years. We do have a need for an internship coordinator. And I feel task could provide us with that service at a reduced rate of less than 125,000. I think we could probably contract with task to provide us with internship placement to a detune of about $65,000 to $70,000. And that would eliminate the need for us hiring an FTE, which would also involve benefits and other, other benefits that our full-time employees receive. So that's the work that I understand that task has performed in the past. And if this, this group wanted to explore how we can bring task, one need that we do have is around CBTE and pathway exploration with the internship placement piece.
So I'm looking at the chart. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question. Don't we already have an employee who there isn't, isn't there somebody at the high school whose job is to be an intern coordinator?
No.
Not anymore.
Gone.
That position was eliminated?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that position was not aligned with the CBTE department. It was a class that the person taught. And then from that class, the person placed students in the community. So with our, with our CBTE program, the scope and sequence of the courses that are taking, we need to make sure that the kids also get their internship in order to meet the requirements with DESI.
Okay. I'm sorry, you calling me? Okay. So I'm a little confused by the superintendent's statement. So in lieu of the $125,000, we want to negotiate $65,000 for one of their staff people to work with us directly? Is that what I'm hearing?
If, if this group is interested in bringing task back, I would propose that we bring them back in the form of providing us with internship placement.
Okay. So, but you put a dollar value to that. How did you come up with that dollar value?
In conversations that I've had with task in the past, I mean, we, they, they told me that a internship coordinator would probably be around 65,000 to 70,000 for the year.
Okay. And that relieves us, relieves us of benefits and all the extras, correct? Okay. Now, with the turnover at task, the gentleman before, the female now, is now no longer in their employ, correct? The, what is it, executive director? What's the title?
Yeah, I don't know her official title.
Director, let's say, say director. So what's the, what's the, what's the org chart look like now? What's the transition? I mean, I don't like to get into something without knowing, you know, the foundation of who's going to be leading this. Do we know that yet?
I don't, I don't. I know there is one person who's still in, hold on. I can pull up her name.
I mean, and the other thing while you're looking superintendent, you know, I'm all about internships, but I'm also all about paid internships. Are these being paid by either the school department, by task, or the employer?
These are not paid internships.
Okay.
So I, I think the only, after the employee that you referenced, Mr. DeMello, leaves, it'll be the president and CEO. And I'm not sure about the structure as well for task.
Okay. Because I, I think it would be cool or an idea that we develop towards a paid internship program for our students, because there's costs associated with internships, whether it's buying clothes, transportation, whatever it may be. And it's, it's short dollars. We've been very creative at the university on getting partners to support that, institutions, banking institutions, whatever. Because I know it's valuable to have the on-hand experience. I did it all my life. I was the age of 16 years old. I was doing what I'm doing today. So, but I think we need to develop maybe if, if, let's say, if we, we were spending 125,000, it's only cost 65,000. Can we, is it legal? Is it, you know, possible to say we have $30,000 worth of dollars to support paid internships of these students? Because it also provides an incentive for these kids. So you know what I'm saying? Is that, is that possible? Has that ever been done?
I can inquire and make sure that we're not breaking any finance regulations.
Okay. All right. So the leadership, you know, org chart, where they stand, and the idea I just brought up with my colleagues also are in agreement. Thank you.
Okay. So the proposal before us from the task person is to bring back one career specialist and one career mentoring coordinator, so that they can resume the level of work that they provided prior to the pandemic, when we had to cut, cut the program. And the numbers of students that it affects, that an uptick in the program effects is listed for you in this chart that they, they put forward. So a task career specialist, she points out, has, is already receiving requests from Johnson and Johnson.
Point of information, where's that chart? I'm sorry, was it an email sent to us?
Yeah, yes.
From you?
Couple of days ago, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so if you, if you look at the letter, she says that she's asking the school committee to reconsider the funding for the task program for fiscal year '22. If they were level funded at the fiscal '20 level of 125,000, this would allow task to bring back two additional staff members, as I have pointed out, a coordinator and career, career mentoring coordinator and a career specialist. And it will allow them to go back to working with the teachers and directors who are assigned requesting our services for fiscal '22 and continue our mission. So that there are people who are already asking for the kind of internship and student support that they were able to provide in years past. And as the speaker pointed out, who's coming to work for the TPS, by the way, very well spoken. They, the task has had this relationship with Taunton for about 25 years. So we, we have talked in the past about, as you were recommending superintendent, a year or more ago, in cutting task that we were going to absorb some of the work regularly. You know, that's not done. And we certainly have enough on our plate at this point in time that we can use this next year as a year for transition into a new iteration, if that's what you're thinking on doing. In the meantime, appropriating $125,000 for a year's work, so that we can be clear about what it is that task is able to do, have them go ahead and do it, and then have the people who are working with us help us to prepare for the next iteration, which is to absorb some of the, that work and that responsibility. So Mr. DeMello is suggesting, for example, that we have paid internships. We might want to look at the whole intern structure, whatever that might be. I'm not going to pretend that I know what that is or what you're thinking superintendent, but build that structure and then propose it during the next budget cycle and go ahead and absorb that work within, within the district. We certainly, we certainly have sufficient resources that we can carve out $125,000 to be able to do this and sever the relationship with, the 25-year relationship with task in a way that supports that 25 years of experience, supports the teachers and students and the task people who have been working with us, because we're moving smoothly into a new iteration of the work that has been going on previously. So that, that, that really is my recommendation. Because I, I'm not, I don't have a clear grasp superintendent of what your, when your plan, what your plan is, when this plan would happen, what it, what it means. And I think that particularly the mentor program, I've heard only high praise from both businesses and students who have participated in the mentor program. And given what we have talked about at length regarding the social emotional needs, particularly of our adolescent students, that this mentorship program has, prior to the pandemic, really helped to support some kids who like, don't have anybody to connect to. And when you listen to the mentors talk about the relationships that they have developed with these young people and the continuing relationship that they have even after the students have left the high school, just seems to me is worth really looking at to help to support their social and emotional well-being in their reentry, full reentry into school. So that's, that's really what I'm, that's what I recommend.
Ms. Dougherty?
Sorry, I had to close my window.
I have a question.
Yep.
Mr. Cabral, through you, Mr. Cabral. Are the ESAR or ARP monies available to support this due to the fact that we are doing something community-based that could be involved with healthcare, social, emotional? Any caveat of that? Is that possible?
I think it qualifies under the, under the umbrella that it's bringing back a program that was caught because of COVID.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, and again, I think it gives us a transition year superintendent to go from nothing back to task, which is something that we know, to whatever the new iteration is going to be. Nate?
So, yeah. So, just, just some thoughts in general and through you, a question, Mr. Cabral. So, um, I was, I was involved with the task program as a mentor. So it is a great program and there's a great benefit to our students. So I fully support bringing it back in one way, shape or form. Additionally, I'm a huge supporter of an internship program, and I agree with Mr. DeMello. We should definitely work to see if we can get this as a paid cooperative education program. That, that's what I did, that's, that's what I did in college. That's Northeastern University. That's where I came from. Everywhere of work, we've had a co-op program where we bring students in mostly from universities to do actual work in industry and get paid for it. So there's definitely opportunity to do the same for our high school students, particularly the, the career vocational students. So whatever form this takes with task, I think one of the critical things is we're going to need somebody from Taunton Public Schools to be responsible for this program. So task is going to have to, my opinion, task should be reporting to someone within TPS. And we got to be holding them accountable for what we expect for them. And then having basically a report out at the end of the year or quarterly or monthly to make sure that it's achieving our goals. And then at the end of the year, we can determine whether it makes the most sense to continue on with task performing these services or whether over time we want to absorb those services into Taunton Public Schools. Because I could see it working either way. At the end of the day, the most important thing is that we actually get, we get a benefit for our students. And so my, my general question is, if we go forward with task, who are they going to be reporting to?
They would report, if it's aligned with the CBTE department, the co-directors, Mike Proposa and Dala Hotung, through the guidance department, most likely would be Jennifer Andrews, maybe Paul Bachman or Greg Gay. But I, that would be something that we would have to finalize internally or could be somebody at central office. And if I could just add a comment, and again, purely a suggestion, take it for what it's worth. Task has sent us a proposal on what they are offering to do. Would it be wise if the committee is committed to 125,000? Again, I'm saying 65, but if the committee is committed to 125,000, would it be wise to work with the guidance department, Principal Delaney, and the CBTE department to have them put together a scope of services that they need, but task to provide at the cost of 125,000 versus task telling us what they're going to provide for 125,000? That way, we get the benefit in the services that we truly needed in our school department. Just a suggestion.
Well, interestingly enough, I was thinking that myself, that we could appropriate the funds. Greg has just put a note in the chat that said maybe we would appropriate 125,000 and use 25,000 for paid internships. But we, we would first have to engage task in, okay, we've agreed to bring you back. What does this look like? And these are the things that we want to see. In addition to what you're saying, these are the things that we want to see happen for, for our kids. And then ask them to put together a proposal. And we won't obviously just hand over the funds if it's not a proposal that we feel is in the best interest of our kids.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think we need to incorporate some form of payment. Legal, if we can do it. If not, then we pay them and they pay the students through that money. That's also legal. But we can't send our students out there without some compensation of some kind. I just don't, I don't think that's, it's not, you know, the old days. This is the new days. There's demand for, for, for workers. The students are getting a benefit, yes, but so is the company. So, and they're going to be paying minimum wage. So I think there's a way, I mean, the company's not going to be paying minimum wage. We're going to support the minimum wage for these students through this money, whatever. Okay? That's what I think. Thank you.
Yeah. Nate?
Yeah. So I, I agree with what Superintendent Cabral said. Absolutely. Task has presented what they intend to do. We need to get a plan from Taunton Public Schools, what we actually need. And then those things should meet in the middle. And I think definitely before we go forward, we got to determine who in Taunton Public Schools is in charge of it. Because if, if everyone's in charge, then no one's in charge. So I think whatever you determine is, is the best. So be it the heads.
No. I'm sorry.
Carol, you know, I'm mute.
What time was this supposed to be?
So sorry. So whether it be the heads of the business department in charge of it or somebody from guidance or somebody in central office, I think there has to be a clear leader of it. Because I'd say a year from now, certainly this subcommittee, if not the whole school committee, is going to want to report out from TPS on how was this successful or how was it not successful? And what would we like to see in the future? So I, I don't think we want any ambiguity there. So I think let, let's determine who's in charge of it. Let's get some feedback from Taunton Public Schools on what they want and then go back to task with that. And, and on the subject of paid interns, I mean, the company that they go to work for should be paying for it. So task, us, whomever's in charge, we facilitate that. I mean, that, that's been my experience. You know, I worked for Johnson and Johnson. They, they pay the high school students or the college students directly. I worked for a company called Micro Group. We had high school students that came in. We, we paid them directly. So it's not that we would have to pay the students or that task would pay the students. You would arrange for the businesses to, to pay them. That, that's, that's how you would set up a paid internship.
So the conversation with task along these lines is to ask if they have ever approached the company. We're talking about another program, Marquise, at the moment. To ask a task, Zolmyra Alcock is the leader there now taking Dan LeBrun's place, to ask them if they've ever approached companies about paid internships or, you know, what, what is the relationship? So it bears a conversation. So there are certain criteria that we have that circumstances under which we would want them to continue to work with us in a different, different iteration.
And one, one last comment. This is going to be starting September of 2021, correct? No, 22.
Yes.
Good. Good, thank you.
So, and the 125,000 is for a year. So superintendent, does that, that make sense? So we would recommend to the committee that we appropriate $125,000 based on the recommendation, based on your recommendation that you want to have this work absorbed to some degree by the TPS going forward. And so we are asking task to work with us to create a plan that would include these, these items.
The only thing I would add, Mrs. Dougherty, is if it works very well or things go well with, with the model that we've put together with the high school staff, high school input and task, then we may not need a full-time FTE. We could continue to partner with task as long as they are viable partner to provide the scope of services.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And that's my concern is a viable partner. That's why I asked the question. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the, I'm sorry.
Sorry, are you going to summarize everything, Carol?
Well, go ahead. Let's hear what.
I just want to make sure I have my marching.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have my marching orders. So we are going to work with the high school departments, guidance, CBTE, Principal Delaney, to develop a scope of services and meet with task and have, ask them to provide us a proposal within that umbrella, which also includes paid internships. And then I need to provide a report on whether paid internships are allowable and also the staffing, the current staffing structure for task. Did I miss anything?
So, so current staffing structure, what, what is that?
Do they plan to replace the person who will be leaving them on the 12th?
Oh, that's, that's, yeah. I mean, I think that that's a good question. But the fact of the matter is that that's really an internal, that's their, their issue. We can certainly ask them the question. I'm sure they'd be forthcoming. So just the one, just a question. And that is that the development of the scope of services along with our high school and alternative high school should be done with, together with task. So we, we would reach out to them to say that if the school committee agrees that we are going forward in this way and that we would like the lead principals, whoever else you want at the table, perhaps Mike and Dollar or one of the other of them, to sit with task. Because I think that, that it's pointless to develop a scope of services, like a wish list, that we want to have tasks say ultimately, well, we're, we don't do that work or we're not interested in doing that work. So to have them at the table to have that conversation, I think, makes sense. It's one-stop shopping rather than back and forth. You, is that okay with you? So how about Nate and Greg? Okay. So the motion is to recommend to the school committee that we appropriate $125,000 for, to work with task for the coming year. Under those circumstances, paid internships will be explored. Primary contact person at both high school and Taunton Alternative High School would be identified. And that we would sit down to develop the scope of services with task and the high schools. That's the motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Nate, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
So would you second that and then we'll vote? Is that your second?
Second.
All right, great. All those in favor say aye.
That's my second.
Yeah, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you. Thanks superintendent, very much. That was easy, I have to say. So, Marquise, thank you for coming in. You know the superintendent, of course, you know Greg and Nate behind that smiley face. That's neat. And so we want to do a couple of things. So we're here to consider bringing Coaching for Change back in whatever form it is that you are recommending for the coming year and thereafter, if that's what we want to do. So I, I think, and I'm going to ask Greg and Nate, also the superintendent, is it worth having Marquise review the winter program first and then talk about what is proposed? Or would you just rather talk about what is proposed?
Just a quick, quick question. Is there anything that can happen over the summer? Does that exist over the summer?
We, not this year, but moving forward, we can. Sorry, that's my little guy yelling at me out the window. I see you, buddy. We don't have anything for this summer because we're, we're piloting three different programs in other communities. And so we don't want to spread ourselves too thin. But moving forward, if we have enough time, we can run summer programming.
Thank you.
Okay. So the question is, do we, do we want to hear just a brief review of the work in the winter?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a brief review of the work in the winter.
Okay. All right. You're on, Marquise superintendent, as well.
Definitely, definitely. So Josh, I, should I just chime in? Or do you want to open up or how?
You can, you can begin, Marquise. I did collect some feedback from principals, teachers and students as well that I can share.
Oh, that'd be awesome. Awesome. So what I'll, I'll share on my end from an operational standpoint. We, our original plan was to do, I think it was four weeks virtually and four weeks in person. But what ended up happening was we ended up only doing a four-week virtual program for Martin Friedman and Parker. And we were able to recruit college students from across the country, including Dartmouth College, Tufts University, Northeastern, to run morning programs and to run like, and the real piece was all focused on engagement and, and team building type exercises and team building type exercises that could happen Wednesday mornings for four weeks. And it was really about getting kids engaged and excited about the school. What ended up, what ended up cutting our program short was the push to getting every, all the students back in person. We were also delayed just because things were changing so quickly and schedules were changing. But we were able to get, I think it was eight sessions, eight to 10 sessions in before the conversion happened. And so that, and I'll let, John, do you want to talk about like some of the feedback from students, principals and teachers?
I'll give you, in no random order, I'm not going to identify school. So I'll just go with principals first. So there was, principals commented that there was high student engagement and enrollment. Students tended to really enjoy the program. The program presents opportunities to strengthen relationships between students and staff. Additionally, the students enjoyed being around the mentors. One principal stated that they were happy to see the program continue throughout the pandemic, offering students an additional outlet. And principals open to continuing the program again next year, even if it looks differently. And the last principal said, considering the circumstances, the program, the pandemic can be held virtual. So considering the circumstances, the program was well. However, CPRC obviously is much more valuable and impactful when it's held in person. Staff feedback, great experience for students to connect with role models during such a difficult time. They helped to inspire students who wanted to help others and become mentors. They gave students an opportunity to experience some joy and they were able to engage through games, which helped develop relationship skills. It was difficult to run virtually, attendance did fluctuate. The maximum number of students attending because of the fluctuation was about 13. And unfortunately it had to end, so they wish it could have continued to sustain the momentum. And then it was difficult to get the targeted students to participate in the program due to the nature of the pandemic and being held virtually. Again, more effective when it's held in person. And the students do miss the in-person component where there are physical activities that have been held in the past. This is from the kids. The kids really enjoyed connecting with the college students. It was good. We loved the activities and mentors. Glad it was on Wednesdays. It was nice. And it helped me or helped some kids make new friends. So those are just some of the feedback that we received.
So it sounds all pretty positive, so that's, that's very good. Thank you, John, for that and for reaching out to those folks to get that feedback. Appreciate that. Greg?
Mr. Superintendent, will this also qualify as one of those programs that get cut due to COVID that we could bring back under SIR or ARP?
I feel pretty confident that it meets the SEL piece. And again, I think we could also say, Mr. DeMello, like the other program, that it was cut due to COVID. So we're trying to restore some programs that were lost due to COVID, which is an allowable expense.
And through you or Ms. Dougherty to Marquise, what's the total cost of this? With all, is it all middle schools, right?
So do you, yeah, do you want the presentation of what it might look like for next year before you get to the dollar sign? Or you want to cut to the chase?
I mean, did anything change drastically? It's all going to be in person, correct? There's no more remote stuff.
Right.
Nate, I don't know if you're as familiar as I am, but I'm willing to listen.
Well, I am familiar with the Coaching for Change as it was, you know, a couple of years ago. My daughter was actually part of the program, but I would like to, I would like to see the presentation on how we envision bringing Coaching for Change back, what it will look like at the three middle schools and how many students we expect to participate from each school.
Go. Yeah.
So hold on, let me, I'm working on sharing my screen, I'm sorry.
Screen share, okay. So how many, while you're doing that, how many students participated in that four-week virtual training or virtual program?
Hold on, I have the packet, hold on one second, I'm sorry. At Parker, we had a total number of seven students. Martin, we had a total of 12. Friedman, we had a total of 10. And we were operating during the Wednesday morning homeroom period. And so, hold on. Can you see my screen?
Yep. I'm going to pull up, pull up that, yeah, great.
So what we're really focused in on is figuring out after the pandemic, how do we get kids more connected to school and getting them engaged and excited to come to school? What we know is that teachers, educators, school staff, they're going to be overworked and overloaded with the amount of work that they have on their plate and also trying to understand how to recover from the learning loss that has happened over the last year. And so what Coaching for Change is looking and proposing to do is bring college students into the mix by assisting and supporting teachers and school staff in a variety of ways, right? And we know that every school is different and every school is going to need something that's very different, right? Parker is different than Friedman, which is different than Martin. And so allowing principals to tailor and customize what that college student experience is, is really important for those students and figuring out how do we provide the social emotional learning that kids need so that they can show up and teachers can do their job in teaching, right? Because if kids feel connected and they show up, they're going to learn, they're going to, and they're going to feel safe to make mistakes and learn from those mistakes. And so our model historically, and what we're looking to do moving forward, is having a teacher mentor and coach one to two college students who's leading small group activities, right? And those small group activities can take place in the classroom. It could take place in, during lunchtime, it could be, it could take place during recess or during enrichment blocks. And we know that this has worked historically, both in, like in Taunton, with the teachers that are there, because it's not just seen as more work. It's seen as teachers and school staff, one, having assistance and then also providing teachers with a leadership opportunity where they're coaching and inspiring the next generation of educators, especially when our college students, over 60% of them are self-identifying as people of color. And so historically, within our, within Coaching for Change, we have three roles. We have a site director who helps with enrollment, program implementation, site logistics. And they work, they're like the principal's right hand and really making sure that everything is operating well within the, within the school. We also have skills coaches who are going to be mentoring and supporting the college students. So it's not just throwing the college students into a random school, hoping that things go well, right? They're going to get the guidance and support that is needed as they're leading small groups, whether it's having conversations with, with an at-risk group that the assistant principal knows just needs some extra love. Or if it is where you have some socially awkward kids that are struggling to connect and make friends, right? We know that there's a lot of different ways we can use college students very strategically because the studies have shown us that near-peer mentoring is a really powerful tool and especially when we're putting kids, college students of color that have the same experience and shared backgrounds as the students they're working with. And so here's, here's kind of like how we're thinking about the work we're doing. Historically, pre-pandemic, we've had after-school programs. And this year, we're piloting summer programs. But our goal for next year is to provide in-school support that's going to be, that's going to happen in school. And we're going to be placing three college students in school during the school, during the school day. Our college students are going to be sophomores, juniors and seniors that want to have an impact in the community. And they're not necessarily education majors, right? They're interested in humanities, in social science, some are interested in business. But our goal is to begin inspiring and exposing college students to a career in education and also being exposed in a really meaningful way to what Taunton Public Schools has to offer as a potential pipeline, a future pipeline to build the talent pool. And as I mentioned before, what are our college students doing? They're helping, like I want to emphasize, helping and assisting teachers and school staff in building student engagement so they feel more connected, both inside of the classroom and outside of the classroom. And so once we get to the dollars and cents of this, where if we look at the in-school placement model, that is what I'm proposing for Taunton Public Schools. It's 4,500 per placement. But I think that John and I have previously talked about it being 3,500. I'm not 100% sure, I have to refer back to my notes. But it's, instead of calling it a program fee, we're calling it a placement fee where college students are being placed in the school for anywhere from 24 to 30 weeks. And in order for us to get this started, we know we need to first form our partnership with the district and then we have to customize it and tailor it to each school's needs. And what we're, what I'm hoping we can propose is that we can identify three to six schools that we can partner with and bring two to three college students per school that they can work with. And so on average, the average college student that will be operating and working within the, within each school, our college students, one college student works with approximately 16, anywhere from eight to 16 middle school students. So that's how we're proposing and thinking about what this looks like moving forward.
Are you done, Marquise?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking for another, another screen share.
I'll stop the screen share and then we can open it up for.
So, so the difference between previous programs and this is that this is not an after-school program. This is during the school time. So the virtual program was during school time and it seemed to, planning out that time so you're not disrupting schedules, seemed to work, as I heard Mr. Coverall give us feedback. So you're thinking about a broader program, but during the school day, appropriate times when students would be available and the college students would be onsite?
Yes.
Yeah, this is not virtual at all, this is in-person. And the school leader, so are you talking about the James Kotmires of the world? That lead teacher, so it was James at Martin, Jennifer, Jessica Fernandez at Friedman, I don't know who was, I don't know who was it. What am I missing? Parker, I don't know.
John, unmute.
I believe it was Nancy Phillips.
Oh, really? Okay, Greg?
At me, and I really like sliders, but Carol, that's a pitch slider. Not a food product, no. So the during classroom time thing is what I'm struggling with. I thought the success or the whole thing was after-school that we've had before, right? It's always been after-school programs. And that does not exist anymore, the after-school programs, Marquise?
John, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, I'd be happy to because Marquise and I spoke last Thursday, Marquise?
Yep.
Yeah, a week last, a week ago, we spoke. So one of the struggles with the after-school piece, and again, the after-school piece is beneficial, but you don't always get the right kids or the students that you need to be there sometimes can't be there. So that's why the in-school model, based on what Marquise has been sharing with me, I thought was interesting because now it opens up, say, a school like Friedman with 840 kids to have an opportunity to work with a mentor. So one of the things that Marquise and I, which he didn't discuss, we're planning on having one of the principals from a school talk to our principals, how she is utilizing Coaching for Change in her building.
About another district?
Another district who's been, who's been very successful. So I just, I can't remember the date, Marquise, so I need you to remind me. So what Marquise and I talked about was, and this is take for example, a student who maybe needs some redirection or maybe a student who's having an off day, that or group of kids, that mentor could work with those students in the classroom, helping to redirect, helping to keep them engaged as almost like a counselor in the classroom, just being by the student's side or facilitating with the kids to get them back on track. Marquise mentioned in some of the schools that they actually go into the cafeteria and work with kids in the caf as far as social groups interaction. And he also mentioned that they work with the assistant principals or with the guidance counselors almost as an extension of their office to work with students, providing them the supports that they need from another adult. So the after-school piece does work, but I like the concept of in-school where you can immediately address and target students who need the support during the school day and ultimately get them back on track into the classroom, you know, engaged and learning.
If I may continue, and how do these students get identified? Are they voluntarily asking to be part of this or are teachers, principals telling the superintendent or the program, these students have to be or should be in the mentorship program?
Yeah, so the way the program worked before, Marquise and the principals did work on identifying students who would benefit after-school from these programs. So we would utilize the same, the same strategy to find those kids, as Mrs. Curt likes to say, those kids who could use a little love or maybe those kids who could use a positive adult role model in their lives. Now, maybe a big brother, big sister type role model and have that connection done during the school day, six hours during the day when they're there versus a short period of time where they're being pulled in a million different directions to work with other kids after school. So I, I'm intrigued by this in-person model because it reminds me of, similar to what a lot of accounting agencies do, they meet the kids in school and provide them with those services and supports.
And one last comment until I go off. Is there a problem with teacher unions and stuff like that, if that happening?
As long as they're not teaching and doing the duties of our educational assistants or working with kids and teaching material. Yeah, I mean, and if it is something that I need to broach with our teachers' union, I'd be happy to. But I mean, maybe that's something Marquise and Superintendent Malone can fill me in on and how they worked it out in that school system.
I mean, so the way we've done it in other districts is that we're not replacing or taking over any other jobs. Our college students are working to assist and support. So like our college students wouldn't come in and take the place of a substitute teacher, right? That's, that's a gross misuse of our college students because they're just not trained for that, right? Like, but they could be hired upon the completion of the program to be subs, but that's not our, our program is not for them to serve as a substitute for full-time or part-time positions purely as a support role to the positions that already exist in the building.
Nate?
Thanks, Carol. And yeah, my apologies, I had internet connection issues. You can hear me? Okay, so, so yeah, Marquise, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I'm intrigued by the in-person model because if I. Um yeah, I'm intrigued by the in-person model because if I understand it correctly. Uh it seems that more students would be able to benefit from this program. Being that it would be during the day than after school because uh as I think one of you mentioned. Some of the kids that need this support the most, they might be the kids that can't get to and from the after-school program. So. All of the kids are in school all day, so I think that opens up the scope um of of who can benefit from it. And if our college mentors are in the building, I see no reason why we're limited to. You know, any any certain amount of students that can benefit from that. Would that would that be an accurate way to describe it? Yes. All right, excellent. And um and and furthermore, I I I think since it seems that the goal of this program. Uh would be more in the realm of uh social and emotional support. I mean, there's really no such thing as too much support for that. Uh so I think uh any any teacher you would talk to, any staff in the schools would would welcome. Uh all the support we can get for these kids in the social, emotional uh realm. And I think furthermore, sometimes younger people, you know, college students, they can reach. Our students in a way that maybe the teachers can't. So um I I I'm I'm fully behind all of that. Uh so I I think this sounds like a great program. Um I'm looking forward to it. Um however, just like my concerns with the task program, um it it's accountability. So I want to know who within Taunton Public Schools are going to be responsible for the C for C program. Uh monitoring it, keeping in touch with it, making sure that it's uh living up to what we expect. And making sure that our students are uh receiving the full benefit of the program. So the way that or well, the way we've designed it. Is that we work so Coaching for Change works with the principal. The principal identifies the teachers. And then Coaching for Change works with the teachers on how we're mentoring uh and supporting the college students. Uh that that's the accountability side on the Coaching for End piece. Um. John, do you want to talk about it from the from the Taunton Public School side?
Yeah, so I I mean, I know we've talked about having teachers serve as the leaders. Well, I mean. And again, if I was a principal again, I would probably have my assistant principal, my guidance counselor, take more of the lead because they know who this. They know the students uh better and they have more flexibility in their schedule versus a classroom teacher who is tied to a schedule. So they can't always make themselves available. So I would um obviously the principal. And working closely with Director of Student Services, who is Kathleen Perry. Uh we would continue to monitor and get the feedback and share it with Marquis. And if any concerns are brought to our attention, I mean, I would ask that the principals bring their concerns to Kathy Perry or to myself. And then I will address the concerns with Marquis, just like Marquis brings concerns to my attention. And then we address them with the principals. I do not want staff in Coaching for Change staff. No uh dealing with adult issues. Let's let the adults deal with it on our end so that their kids in the in the program. Can run at the building level and the adults will hash things out.
Uh so so.
Oh, sorry. My my apologies. Um yeah, so I I I think that that's kind of what I'm what I'm looking for because I I would agree. I think I think you need to put that at the level of. Either the guidance counselors or the assistant principals because yeah, the teachers are really going to be the ones. You know, doing the work with the Coaching for Change staff and with the with college mentors. I think you need kind of a a a higher level view because I would almost want to see a. Here's the group of students that participated in. Here's what was going on with them before the program. Here's what's going on with them after the program by any metrics that we would deem, you know, reasonable. By just e- even even just like the the demeanor of the children or how engaged they are with school. I I I think a guidance counselor and assistant principal would be in a good position to be able to say. Here's the benefit that we saw holistically for all of these children after this program. And I think that's what this committee is going to want to see when the program is done. And it's certainly what the entire school committee is going to want to see when this is done. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh thank you for that careful analysis. Um you you write right on the money. Greg, do you?
If we have a fee of what forty-five hundred, uh each mentor can handle between eight and sixteen.
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five or forty-five hundred.
Thirty-five. Marquis said they had talked about a thirty-five.
Yeah.
So thirty-five hundred uh. How many students are we anticipating? Between the three middle schools to attend this? I mean, uh uh I'm just trying to do some calculations here.
We're we're thinking of placing anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-four mentors within the district.
Twenty-four to thirty-four. So let's call it thirty. Times thirty-five hundred, hundred and five thousand. Okay. I I just don't want, you know, uh when you go from eight to sixteen. You know, there's a big difference between eight students and sixteen students and and in the in the school day. So you know, i- if we have to add additionals, then you know, that one oh five can quickly turn into one fifty, you know? And I think that's what some of my colleagues may be struggling with is the cost factor. But anyway, I just want to throw that out.
I'm sorry, Marquis.
So I was gonna say, just as we think about it from uh eight to sixteen. What's really unique about it is the ability to, hey buddy. Is our ability to have college students work with multiple students based on time blocks. Right? So after school, that one college student will always work with only eight middle school students. But when you're talking about the school day, and I'm making this up, I don't know if this is Taunton Public Schools. Spell schedule, but if the stu- the college student is there for two hours. And they have two different groups, then that's how we get the sixteen without an added cost. Because for hour one, they have one group of eight, and then for hour two, they have a different group of eight.
Yeah, and that was exactly what I was going to comment on, that the hour structure is intriguing because now you can. You could do four thirty-minute blocks and now you have twenty-four kids or thirty-two kids.
Get our bang for the buck. Gotcha. Thank you.
And Marquis, I think the one piece that you forgot to mention we got in the class was the soft cost with professional professional development. I think the committee should be aware.
Definitely. So over the uh during the pandemic, Coaching for Change was um a son or assigned awarded. Uh a professional development provider. So what we're going to be able to do is through the training of uh of Taunton Public School staff. Uh and teachers, they're going to be able to get PD, which is a soft cost, I believe, of six thousand. They're going to get paid for being trained and they're going to be going to be able to get PDPs towards their license, which is an added benefit.
So teachers are going to be paid to participate. In the professional development. And you used a figure of six thousand dollars, but they getting six thousand dollars to participate or that six thousand in the overall?
Over overall, it's it's it'd be if it's eleven buildings, it'd be eleven teachers. I believe the contracted rate is thirty-two sixty-four an hour. And the max PD a teacher would receive would be sixteen hours. So I think it's a little over five hundred dollars per person. Total cost is about six thousand if if my math is accurate.
Sounds good to me. And that takes place in the summertime? So you're talking about eleven teachers. Are you thinking eleven? School buildings, John? Where do the eleven teachers come from?
Yeah, Marquis, can we see if I can pull this document up? Marquis did a nice job of summarizing this plan.
So we've been clearly dealing with only middle schools. So are you thinking of adding the elementary schools? Is that where the eleven comes from?
Yeah, we had talked to poss- about possibly, again, possibly using our elementary schools. And the alternative high school and the high school. So that would be eleven sites. We would exclude the preschool. And 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 it actually comes out. Almost identical to task. We we're looking at a budget of between ninety to one hundred and twenty-five thousand. That Marquis could work with the principals to create a program with a cafeteria. In classroom or in school. Our mentors working with the kids and think I think of the mentors serving the role almost like a community facilitator. You know, that that favorite uncle, that favorite aunt, that big brother, that big sister. And that's I see them serving, they're almost working like our community facilitators and in the piece that I keep hopping back to. It's a there's a piece of testimony that really stuck with me when it came from CJ Day. About we don't have programs for people or kids who look like him or look like CJ. That piece really, really resonated with me and is really stuck with me. So I think for um you know, a greatly reduced cost, I think we should also emphasize too. I mean, this is less than what we were spending pre-pandemic. And I think we'll be able to service more kids when we have them at our disposal.
And it's less uh for a lot of variety of reasons, not the least of which is that there is no transportation cost here. Is that right, Superintendent?
Correct. That's so that's that was part of my points, but it's probably about a third. Uh not a quarter, maybe about a third of the cost.
So and now so we pay, we're paying. Teachers to participate as we have in the past.
The PD.
But the the lead teachers in in the buildings, we're paying the thirty-five hundred dollar, in addition, we're paying the thirty-five hundred dollars. Per college student for this is annual, right? This is for the year. So we're looking at about how much ninety to one hundred and twenty-five thousand? I don't know how to. Figure out which end is the right end, but.
I I say up to, wouldn't the motion be up to depending on how many mentors we assign?
So uh is there a planning phase here?
Yeah, if I can, if I could pull, allow me to log in and see if I can find that document that Marquis sent me.
Uh I I have to run. Is there a motion we need to?
Okay, so what what we will do is and we'll work out the details in terms of presentation, make a recommendation to the school committee. That we appropriate one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to implement the Coaching for Change program as described. And we'll describe it uh for the fiscal twenty-two school year. Is that correct, John?
That sounds accurate.
And um Marquis had mentioned to me maybe a longer term um memorandum of understanding. So we need an MOU, whether it's for a year or three years. When you get to that point, we're not this. The committee is not going to get into the weeds in that regard. That's really up to you, Superintendent. So that's going to be the recommendation. Um to the school committee.
Yeah, if you want to share the screen, I can show you the timeline real, the implementation timeline real quick. I found the document.
Let me let me just um have somebody make that motion second.
So moved.
Nate?
Second.
All right, all of us in favor to say aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone. I'll I'll listen to the uh presentation when you come before the school committee. Thanks, Marquis.
Wist away.
Wist.
Okay.
Oh, where can I find it?
So while you're looking, Superintendent, just to.
I found it.
Okay, great. If you can make that a little bigger.
Yep, uh this was the summary that Marquis. Put together for me to help me understand what we'd be discussing today. So thank you, Marquis, for putting this together. So um again, we just. This was a summary of our conversation. So the mentor cost five to seven hours a week in school, after school. Preferred mentor to student ratios, eight to one, school cafeteria, classroom. We identified the schools. And the tw- the twelve would just mean two per elementary school. So there's twelve, two per middle school, there's six. Two for the alternative high school, there's two. And then for the for the high school, we figure one per house. So that's where we came up with the number four. Uh then June, the implementation plan, if if approved by school committee. And then in July, train staff, professional development.
Yeah.
Okay, so two F two FTE per elementary, middle school and high school. Uh the high school would have four FTE. If it's PD, if the principals choose to have, this is the different hours of, I believe, Marquis, these are the different hours of PD required if they're in the CAF. If they're in the classroom or if they go after school, correct? Okay.
Yes.
All right, and that takes place July and August. And then July through September, Marquis and his program recruit the mentors, September and October, there's. And then that's when the staff are matched with the students. And then that's it. That requires an additional four to six hours of PD. And then September, October, there's a launch. So a budget of about ninety thousand. The twenty-four mentors, thirty-five hundred. At the mentor rate is eighty-four thousand, eleven teachers with the. Professional development rate. But and again, we went on the high end. I think Marquis gave me the high end, right? Eight and eight and uh. Eight and six for the hours on the high end. So the most. And I think the program, the soft cost would be about six thousand. So that's where we get the ninety. And if you added ten more mentors, it goes up to one hundred and nineteen plus six thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. So that's.
Definitely.
Nice job summarizing that, Marquis.
Yeah, thanks. And I think the other element is just knowing that with such a tight timeline. And because we we know that there are so many new schools. That if we're not able to get the right people in at. At at the it with the appropriate time, we would rather push. And use the fall for a planning period and and push to the spring and have a spring start.
So is that you're saying that is only in the instance where you can't find teachers?
In the in the instance that. One. We're delayed in finding teachers. Because I I don't think it's a matter of can't. It's a matter of making sure we're hitting the 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 timeline that 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 we put forth. And being able to schedule time for the teachers who are going to be participating to be trained over the summer.
So is there any indication that we won't find, we won't be able to identify eleven? Teachers across the district?
I- it's not a matter of indication. It's just with school closing, it's a busy time. Right? And so we're 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 meeting with the close of the school year. There's a lot going on. And so i- it's. It would so like really, it's going to be easier in Parker, uh uh Friedman. And and Martin because there's history there. But going into the new schools. They don't really know of Coach. They like, they probably heard of it. Right? But so we just, we just need to be aware. I'm just, I'm just saying this as let's be aware. Of the project implementation or the project plan for the implementation of how we're implementing it. I can't get it out. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I mean, you know best about that. When when would you start recruiting, John? Soon as the school committee adopts. Okay, so um we want to think about the presentation to the school committee. I think that it's important. Uh I like the way you started the conversation, John, when you shared the feedback that you'd gotten on the February program. Um I think that that's probably consistent feedback across the years that we've had Coaching for Change, even though it's had several different iterations. I I don't, I have not heard of people who are disenchanted with it, although Superintendent, you might have, but of course, the good news is always the good news. And then um do so you, John, can present the program to the school committee, right? Or doing Marquis.
Marquis and I, let me make sure that I have no problem summarizing the conversation and the intent. And as but as long as Marquis and I have a chance to review it together to make sure I'm not putting words in his mouth and I'm not mis- misrepresenting. I'm not overpromising on a deliverable, then then we can we can figure that out. And the good news is too, Carol, on Mrs. Doherty's that we have a principal's, we have a principal's meeting on the seventeenth. So whatever the outcome is, I'll be meeting with the principals the next morning.
I can remember once a few years ago, talking to um Mr. Kelleher about. Having a Coaching for Change-like program in his building at that time. Uh so. Um I haven't spoken with anyone else in that regard, but nonetheless, so the thank you. Uh thank you, Marquis. Thanks, Nate and John, of course, Greg too, if not there, uh for the support of these programs. Um I I I think that that it's important for our children, particularly with our emphasis on social, emotional. Uh learning and their needs as we are anticipating them. I'm sure we've seen some of those needs in. uh learning and their needs as we are anticipating them. I'm sure we've seen some of those needs in this short time that they've been back and we're going to see them now that they're out again. We'll see these needs escalating, I'm sure. So this is a, this is good. So any final comments? Nate, John?
No, I just uh thank you, Marquis, for presenting uh the program. Um I think it's a great program. I like, I like the plans. I like the changes uh for the future. I like ex- expanding it to all the schools in the district. Um I I want as many s- many of our students as possible uh to get the benefit of this program. Um I think I think it's vital um and great and I I I fully support it. So I look forward to uh seeing it in action um and and getting an ultimate report out when it's all said and done. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you guys.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Don't forget to thank Oz for taking time out of his busy schedule to re- to televise this meeting. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Jakey. Appreciate that. Um Superintendent, uh oh, I had a question that has escaped me, never mind. Don't have to answer the question. If it occurs to me, I'll text you. Thanks very much. Enjoy the weekend.
All right.